Good evening, welcome to the Board of Education meeting of North Rose Wilka Central School District. Called meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, on the nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
A motion please to approve the agenda. Shelley and Paul, any discussion? Then on in favor of approving the agenda, a motion is geared. At this time, I leave motion please to go into executive session for the purpose of the board to discuss the employment history of a particular person, Jason and Linda. Discussion, all in favor? Motion is geared. At this time, we will be leaving you to go into executive session in another location. You're welcome to wait for us and we shall attend. I will turn it over to Mr. Cohen to introduce the presentations for tonight.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Collier. We're going to start with Anna Madison, if Anna wants to come on up. Mr. Ruff, you want to give her a proper acknowledgement, bring her up to the stage. She's over there with Dad. So Anna, if you want to come on up to the podium and just speak to the board, if you want to give her a proper introduction, that would be fantastic.
All right, tonight we have an eighth grader, Anna Madison, who is speaking on behalf of the middle school. Sorry, Marla. All right, today we have Anna Madison, who's the eighth grader in our building, who will be speaking on behalf of the middle school.
Thank you for inviting me to this meeting today. I am 13 years old and as Mr. Ruff said, I'm in eighth grade. Today I will be speaking to you about the current school year, such as what is going well compared to last year and what needs to be improved. Last year, when I was in seventh grade, it was always frustrating. In almost every class, there was at least one kid who would act up. Occasionally, it was half of the students who were attempting to make each classroom unbearable. Most days, educators were not able to teach a single lesson in an entire class period. Therefore, when there was an exam, very few in the classroom would pass or get above a 90% on the test. This year, the school has been a much more engaging, stimulating, and pleasant place to be. Students perform better in classes, learn more about the topics, and act better overall. There has been a smaller amount of distractions and interruptions, as well as misbehaving children. Now, most of the students pass their classes with fine colors, which is a huge improvement. Some reasons for this drastic improvement might be friendly competitions and activities between grade levels. For instance, most of the students enjoy participating in the door decorating contest, as well as school spirit weeks. They also enjoy the monthly incentives for those who do not get referrals all month long. Although there has been improvement in making our school a better place, there is still room for change. Developing a better punishment for those continuously acting up in classes is an example. Just earlier today, there was a student who refused to obey a teacher's simple request. They had to be escorted out of the room. This event caused precious learning time to be taken from the behaving children. Therefore, the disciplinary measures currently in use are not as effective as they should be. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak. I hope this was insightful on what is currently going on in North Rose Wilka Middle School.
Anna, can we ask you a few questions? The board members engaged with you. I think you did a great job, by the way, honey, I'm very proud of you. You have a great voice and it's nice to see that you have the ability to share both what's going well and your frustrations. That's a skill that's going to serve you well in life, so kudos to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna. Playa this year is going much better than last year. Anna, there's always room for improvement, no matter what we're doing. Board members, do you have any comments? Shelley, Paul?
Anna, do you think part of it was just that you moved to eighth grade and eighth graders are better than even the seventh graders? Or is that not a good comparison?
That might be as well. Last year, they were very immature. Maybe it's coming back from years of virtual learning, that might have been part of the cause.
Yeah, good, okay, thank you.
Anyone? Well, thank you for coming and thank you for sharing, Anna. We hope the rest of your year is wonderful and that your frustrations are lessening as you go through the year. And we're sure that you will be very successful. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, I'd like to welcome our directors up to the podium. We're going to hear improvement plans from Lori Elliott, Community Schools Administrator, Sarah McLean, our director of Student Services, and Fred Trent, the director of Human Resources. So they're going to kind of highlight each of their departments and some of the things that they've addressed under the district's improvement plan relative to their particular areas that they oversee. So Lori, I'll turn it over to you and let you get started. Thank you.
Okay, hi, everyone. So as Mr. Cohen said, we're going to talk a little bit about community schools, special education, DEDs, and human resources. Somehow I got that made up. I'm not sure how I know, but I'll go with that. So all of our improvement plans are aligned with our school tradition and mission to make sure that we're doing best for our students and our families and the entire community. When we start with community schools, a big part of community schools is the grant funding that we have, the DEDs grant funding, to the communities, to enhance what's happening within our schools. I'm starting with the physical area because that's a big part of making sure that we're doing things, sort of high quality programming for our students and our families, and so continuing those things while we're choosing transitioning between different grant sources. One of the big things that we're doing this year is we're shifting our focus in our after-school program to focus where the need really are in the major facilities, and that's in the middle school and the elementary school. So we're continuing those programs. And in those programs, we're focusing on building student relationships with school and with teachers, knowing wanting students to be here in those schools, as well as connecting with their interests. Other programming is working on developing mental health support for our students and their families. We're also working on creating a model alternative learning center, the Cougar Apps program. Their app stands for Opportunities for Personal Success. And that program has become a model for some of the areas schools may be coming. As a matter of fact, it goes on today and somebody asked me about it today, it's awesome. And developing community connections, student opportunities, exploring some different grant funding as things change with what we have, which is why ESL is up there. We can just receive a small grant from them to use in economic programs as well. Continuing on the academic area, we have a fully staffed pre-PK and UPK program, which will pay dividends as years go forward. It's full to capacity, because as many kids can be given in, there's none, so they're doing a great job of learning and growing. Our after-school academic support, and then we also have another grant that's helping teachers learn how to use the technology that they have in a purposeful manner to engage and enhance the academic skills for our students. We're also continuing to focus on the social and emotional areas. It's been a big focus in many of our grants this year. We have training opportunities for our teachers to give up the skills to work with students who have emotional needs and or enhance those skills. We have specific skill-building training sessions for our students, both with prior projects and the Safe Days and Wellness Program. Another recent addition that we have is the System of Care Coordinator, which we're looking at creating. This position, and what this position will do, will connect our students and our families to the resources within our school, as well as outside in our school community. So this System of Care Coordinator is going to be very important to help our students and families. We also are bringing some leadership incompetence programming. Right now, we have Glow Girl, which is a program for young women from Moonee County. We're looking at adding a program for young men too, to help these students and young people develop into the competence that they should have. Community schools, all about partnerships. And as we're doing a lot of that, going out to those partners that we have county-wide, can bring connecting that to what we have in school. Apparently, AIDs are fantastic. They do a great job connecting with what's going on in the communities. Another big grant we have is the Community Health Grant, and that grant is working on creating those connections with the community and basically removing barriers that our students would have to try and get support out of the community. So we're trying to enhance that and make it easier so our students and families can do those things. Lastly, we're always looking at equity, how to make sure that all of our students and families can access the home for the things that they need to be successful in school. We have, we're growing our options for care when it comes to mental health services, to food insecurity, Jose health and mental health services. So we're connecting those programs as well. We have what's called the Advanced Kidney Vento Grant, which is a grant that helps homeless and students in trauma. Homeless may be a little bit unusual for us to think about here in county because it looks a little bit different, but many of our families are facing eviction because of homeless who are closed on, or they can't make the payments. And then many of these families that have to move on to somewhere else where they're living with a family member. And what we can do with the Kidney Vento is make sure that there's schooling and education and the resources that they can access to continue. So we continue that through this Kidney Vento program. So that's what's happening in the grant world and in the community school world as we try to make things better for our students.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about our special education department, our people services. So we're going to start with partnerships. So this year, we have made our emphasis to continue to have as much parent engagement as possible at our CSA meetings. The parents that taught us that Zoom is a great way to get parents to participate. They don't have to miss as much work. They don't have to find childcare for their children that might be home with them. And so that has allowed us to have an increased parent participation and family participation in our CSA meetings, which we're always striving to do. Interest meetings and meetings by storm are also available. Parents, choose them, but Zoom is always an option. This year, we've also had all of our students K-12 attend their CSA meetings, so we can take their partners or coming to their CSA meeting to give them an opportunity to learn about who they are as a learner. With a hook up by the time they're seniors in high school or 21, they can come to that meeting and facilitate it because they're the ones that need to know who they are, who they are as a learner, and how they can advocate for themselves once they're ready to work. As Lori shared, we're partnering with Midwest PBIS to work on Project Epic. And as we discussed before, primary programs and placements for our students who were not able to meet their needs because they were in a whole bullion school district has been a challenge. So we have partnered this year with Cougar Apps to assist with tutoring and finding some additional programming options for our students while they await an opportunity to go to another program. As far as equity, something that we haven't necessarily, or that I didn't highlight a lot last year, are our English language learners. So currently, we have 30 English language learners and we have three E and L teachers, or English as a new language teachers. And so one of our pushes this year is to provide professional development for those teachers on how to best support the students they're working with and how they can also support the teachers, general education teachers and core teachers on how to help English language learners to be successful in that form in their classroom. We continue to use ProPro, which is our system by which we do interpretation and translation to allow parents to be able to participate in CSA meetings, parent teacher conferences, and also receive documents in their home or preferred language. And we're also preparing for the NICE supply, which is the assessment that our English language learners take every spring to see how they're progressing in their programs. As far as social and emotional, this year, we are having monthly to quarterly mental health meetings depending on when the need arises. And that's to help build consistency across all of our buildings. We have some new mental health providers who have been an amazing addition to our team. And so making sure that they regularly help to build that consistency and make sure that we're doing things consistently across all, sorry, across all of the buildings. But also just to have an opportunity for those professionals to get together and support one another. Academic, we are having monthly Special Education Department meetings in each building. And our focus is really providing professional development for our staff to make sure that we are continuing to write student-centered IEPs. That's something that we've always been doing, but it's something we want to continue to improve upon and there's always room for improvement. And also, we want to make sure that we continue to be compliant and follow all of the regulations that we need to make sure that not only are we giving students better, but also compliant IEPs because we know that that's incredibly important. And then financially, so this fall and early winter, I have the opportunity to visit one of our preschool rooms that several of our students attend to help us plan for kindergarten programs next year. Some of our counseling staff have the opportunity to go visit some out-of-district placements. And the reason we want to make you visit and try and increase those visits are to build those connections with our students, but also to help determine what those students are going to need going forward so that we can make adequate programming decisions for them here in the district. We actually have two students who are coming out of the district who will be returning to us this year or next year because they've been so successful in the program. They're ready to transition back, which is always the whole, whenever we have to make that really difficult decision to have a child go out of the district. We're also continuing to maximize grant funding and also making sure that Medicaid reporting is happening so that we can get our maximum reimbursement. And currently, we are on track to meet or exceed what we did last year in terms of Medicaid reimbursement. So that's been a huge positive and something we're going to continue working on. And so the last thing I wanted to do was just kind of highlight putting all of our promises together. And this is two of our students from our 12.1 class at the high school. And earlier in the fall, Jackie Nelson, who's a speech language therapist, and Kathy LaValle, who's the teacher of the classroom, approached Mr. Brett and I about having their students participate in a secret Santa holiday shopping trip, which sounds very fun, but add the thought of it, that I do really to budget for a trip, make a list of what we need to do, do an interest inventory, find out what the students want, and then go through that whole process. So I just wanted to highlight this because it's a great example of how we're, you know, living those partnerships, but how we're also providing students opportunities for engaging, opportunities and activities that they're going to use when they get off their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Education members, for the opportunity to come and speak to you and give you a little update on human resources. So last June, when I was here, I had talked about launching a student summer worker program. We had identified money to a grant that would be able to, be able to offer this program for three years. So we did start it this past summer, provided a seven-hour workday for our students. We thought this would be a direct give back to the community, both monetarily and giving students a safe place to spend the summer. We also tied it to some other opportunities for our students that could gain work experience, of course, earn money, and improve some non-cognitive skills like time management, perseverance, and self-confidence, everything that comes with working a job. So we did start it this year. We had slots available for up to nine students, everything funded through a grant. We had eight applicants, one student who was a graduating senior withdrew before the program actually started, found somewhere else. So we had seven students, six actually lasted all summer, one washed out during the year. So our students were independently and as part of the team. They earned $15,000 in total, which was a direct give back to our community. And I really have to thank our maintenance staff for really making it possible for pairing up with the students, exercising a lot of patience, especially our head custodians, putting them in groups. We thought it was a great opportunity for our students. We're really looking forward to the next two years. We'd like to get nine students in full practice. This year, we opened up school volunteers after a two-year hiatus with COVID. What I did was went through, looked at our application process, revamped it, simplified forms. We made it one form instead of two, aligned everything to our school district policy. So we've had people working through the process. We had to troubleshoot some problems with email accounts where people weren't getting the background check. I've actually been working with the parent liaison from the middle school. She's been very helpful in working, reaching out to people who started the process, kind of getting them through. Right now, we have 21 volunteers, including the ones you'll see on the agenda tonight, who will be approved. I have at least another 10 right now for the next board meeting, and I expect that number to grow. In the areas of positions, you can see our numbers there. I just want to highlight a couple of things. As far as administration, we have Lisa DeSally here, she's right there with a green shirt. We are recommending her for the assistant principal position at our high school. She's here with her two daughters this evening. Hopefully, after, she can come up and meet some of your folks. This year, just to highlight a couple of points, in areas of food service and maintenance, we actually were able to get those departments fully staffed. Of course, that only lasted a short period of time before people had left, but that was a big win. I kind of prioritized substitutes this year. This has been an area of concern without being able to fill some positions. Subteachers, we had 12. Just to put that into context, all last year, we only hired 10 subs. So up to this point, we have 12 so far. I just qualified another one today, so she'll be on the sub list next time. And we brought in eight subservice workers. So that really helps with our absenteeism. In total, 79 positions. And this is a fluid list, it changes quite a bit. Counselors, we just hired, we'll be recommending a counselor to the high school. We had a very well-qualified candidate that we're recommending to you for that position. And also, we have a campus position in Sarah McLean's department, and we're going to be recommending someone for that next meeting. So our current open positions, we do have a few, this is what we're advertising right now. The top three, school psychologist, special ed teacher, and family and consumer science. These are positions we've had open all year. There have been very few candidates, qualified candidates, who have applied. We have other opportunities coming up for long-term subs. We are advertising these positions right now. Our school buildings have done a remarkable job. They have had to shift some things around to make sure a lot of these were able to cover internally, but we would like to have a person in that position. So we are still looking, but in this market, we are in a tough spot with all schools competing for a shrinking number of qualified applicants. And I'd like to thank you again for the opportunity to come and share what we're doing. And all three of us would be happy to take any questions from board members.
Thank you for the updates, but good to hear. Board members, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make? Shelley?
Sarah, I have a question. So I'm wondering, how many students do we have waiting programs?
So currently, we have three students who are still waiting a program.
Are you finding it hard to find programs right now?
Exceptionally difficult to find programs for students. They're experiencing the exact same issues that we are, students who are solid because it takes such highly specialized people to be in some of those programs. They need to have their special education background, they have a BEE professional type backgrounds. They're also really struggling to get support staff, so they have an AIDS for the students, which is also kind of impacting their ability to take to them. So we did start the year with 11 not having a placement, and we're down to three. And a lot of them moved in, so we were like, oh, most of them too. So, but I really do feel confident we actually had two students that were able to, for better or for worse, to start as a new semester at a program. And so I'm feeling hopeful that we'll hopefully have all of the students in a program by the end of the year, and if not by the end of this year, definitely set up.
I just had a question about when you were talking about the equity portion, you were talking about using ProPro for translating and interpreting.
So ProPro is a computer program, and they have live translators by phone and by in-person, or I should say, interpreters, that then if you're in a Zoom meeting or you're in with a parent, you can go on, you can choose, they have over 100 languages to choose from. You can choose a person, and they'll find an interpreter to be able to speak down. I really have a hard time with my hands, so I can take a break then. They find people, they can then, you know, provide the translation to the parent and that. And then we also have first translations for their portal, where you can get documents that need to be translated, so like report cards or any kind of document that needs to open for the parent to be able to read. And so we have students whose native languages are Spanish, Asian Creole. We have two Ukrainian students that we need to update and get documents from. We've had a lot of Spanish documents that were translated, but Asian Creole and Ukrainian one we're still moving to get those sent out. We usually come back with them in 24 to 48 hours, so they're able to get them home. So it's actually a really nice feature to be able to have so that we're not having to contract a full suite every time we need an interpreter, which can get very costly, you need to have to make your travel time to come out, your time to be here, and then your travel to come home. So this really allows us to be able to go into interpreting and also translations within 24 to 48 hours.
We improve the quality of where we're still meeting folks.
And we also want people to feel welcome in that they are part of our community and we're always giving them new language, very good opportunity to be able to do that.
What sort of capacity for pre-PK and pre-4?
So UPK three, which is the half-day program, we can take nine students each. So our capacity is 18 to this 18 and 3 PK program. There's 51 in the UPK four program.
Wow.
And that's considered quality, right, to the state?
So is it a lottery? I mean, do you have more families?
We do have some on the waiting list. Those are on the waiting list for those that actually signed up after we had filled them. So we do have, right now, we've had a couple of students who have left, and we filled those kind of from the top down, who signed who was ready to win. So we're filling as we come through, we put all the students in last week.
I also think it's great that the CSA meetings can be done with Zoom and different ways than the old-fashioned way you had to be there, which was inconvenient. And so it's better for parents if they can get there some possible way, that's great. And I also think it was wonderful that the, our students are hired in the summer. The, for our home. And I know our staff would be trained to tell them what a good employee was like. And that's beneficial, probably, as good as taking all the English spoken plays and every other portion you could possibly take because it's real life. You don't have to use all those skills.
We also have two more students that are working in our elementary school program as well. as well. One is through wait county, another is a chief. Oh, come on, it's the first student of the year, and whatever.
That's great.
Lori, I had one for you and two for Fred, so as long as you're already up there. I've turned it into this, and I think, on slide two, we talked about developing community connections between student and parent. Can you give me an example of that, of one that's worked, of one that's successful?
We are currently, our teacher app program is currently working with a study work program where there's workforce development. So our Matthews is working with these students who are in that teacher app program. Not only are they working to recover credits and do their academics, but also they're reconnecting with state work, where they can work building models, get paid through that process, and really, it's just kind of like our summer work program did for us, kind of give that experience and realize the connection is key when we're involved. So that's a big one that we're considering.
Okay, can you think of one, you know, one specific example, like does someone work at Bob's Big M or perhaps at Empire? Crew growers?
We're still working on building some of those connections. And we're starting to look at it to do those more, especially with the parent growers, we're starting to look at some of those connections to build that program more to move forward. Study work is down, been with the changes program, it's based out of the 1400, and they're actually doing work for Marshall Farms down there as well.
Great, thank you. Fred, two questions. One is, does every volunteer have to do a background investigation?
Yes, each year.
Okay, great. Second question is, do we have the number of bus drivers that we want?
We always want more bus drivers. This year, we actually did hire one, which was a win. Anytime we get a bus driver, it's a win.
Okay, I know that's a nationwide problem.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for the updates, and we appreciate that very much.
So thank you, Mrs. Collier. I'm going to welcome Mr. Barno up to the podium and let him give a quick summary on the budget process that we're going to undertake this year. And kind of kick off, you know, Gary and I presented to you a short while ago about what our economic drivers for the year would be, and, you know, we've got the governor Nate from Earthswearing in, and Earth State of the State. So Gary, if you don't mind, I could turn it over to you and let you get started.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Paulin. As you said, this is really our first formal budget presentation, but as Mr. Paulin said, we've really started this process, in fact, this process never stops, but we have a real start or end date. But we did present back in November, we did a budget balance projection, we're looking out over the next five years, and taking a look at our reserves, and the board adopted the budget calendar already. So we're really into the process. Just talked a little bit tonight, the first couple of slides that we have, I've shared with the board in the past, but I like to have these start off our budget presentations, because they do end up on our website for our community to see. And so we go, right here? Okay. So our budget guidelines. Like to have our budget guidelines and budget goals together at the start of our presentations keeps us in mind, keeps us on track with our budget development, right? So we do develop our budget and say that it will be aligned with the Board of Education goals, both educationally and fiscally, and the budget will reflect true decisions while balancing the needs for all of our students, our instructional goals, improved technology, facilities, try to minimize the impact on our taxpayers. So it's important to remind ourselves this from time to time. Our budget goals are very similar to what we had in prior years, but we look to accomplish our goals by keeping that budget-to-budget increase at a minimum. We don't look for fat budget. We also have to live within our tax cap limits, so our goal is to stay within that limit, and therefore, just getting a simple majority when it comes to the vote in May. We're planning on maintaining our program, maintaining our bus and placement schedule, and continuing with our direct work capital outfit projects. So just real quickly, we've talked in detail before about our budget process. It's a ongoing process. We've had many discussions at the administrative level, at the district office, and with our building administrators, what we're looking to, areas that we may need to come back on for the 2023-24 budget. Those talks are ongoing, and you'll hear more about those considerations. We did discuss back in November at our workshop, our budget factors, the big thing. Right now, we're waiting on some detail on the state revenue picture. We're still waiting on more detail on our major cost drivers. Again, those typically are health insurance, so we don't know if those rates are going to be exactly right now, but within the next month, we'll be a lot more clarity on these things. And we know that we will end up, this process, when, in April, when the board approves this budget, that we take it to the voters in May, we will have a very proven and balanced This process is outlined here with our timeline. So as I mentioned, in April, the state budget is, will be due. We will have a week later and a week before the board will adopt that budget, a work session that go over this budget. And all in between, from here through April, I'll be updating the board as we progress on our budget, okay? So we'll have lots of opportunity here. Then, of course, our final presentation on the 4th, May 4th, which is a budget hearing, and then the 16th with the vote. So that's all I have for tonight, and we'll be giving more detail at our next meeting in two weeks.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much.
I see one thing. Gary, I've heard the governors, they need about increasing foundation aid, deeper funding today, whatever. I don't think.
Yeah, it was supposed to go as fully funded, is what I read too.
Yeah, what I know so far, she's been supporting the fully funding foundation aid, so do expect, like we did last year, to have statewide anyhow, a pretty large increase in foundation aid with a minimum for all school districts. What that will translate for us is, we'll have to wait and see.
Any clue on health costs this year? Last year was, it was an enormous increase, wasn't it, like 17% or something?
Yeah, we were at 22% increase last year.
I can't give you that answer.
Right, first week in February, we'll do some more detail on that as our consortium group meets and sets that rate. So right now, we're budgeting at pretty close to that 20%, 20%. We're hoping that's going to be, hoping that's going to be much lower than that. That'll have a significant impact on our budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Fantastic job, as always. So, you know, we've had a chance to go through and highlight some of our programs, some of our offerings. Nice piggyback for Gary to set up the budget calendar in addition to the presentation that Lori, Sarah, and Fred gave tonight, because I think you'll hear over and over, you know, we're trying to be fiscally prudent with our taxpayer funds, and we're taking advantage of every grant opportunity that's possibly out there that benefits North Rose and would apply to North Rose Wilkins. And here's why. Up in the picture you see, on behalf of Mr. Blankaburgh and the wrestling program, I want to congratulate Noah Wazinski on his 100th victory this past weekend at the Fort Byron tournament. You'll recall that Noah represented us last year as a section five champion, elite champion, and a seventh-place finisher in a 285-pound weight class. That mark right there, 100 victories, is quite impressive. And for a young man, these probably wrestling guys that are, you know, upwards of 40 to 50 pounds heavier than he is, his track record is quite impressive. Because I think the last time I talked with Noah and his father, he weighed in about 245. So his speed, his athleticism, and his agility are certainly paying off, and, you know, doing a lot of good things for us on the mat, in the classroom, and representing our community well. So I'd like to congratulate him. And then on behalf of Mr. Bradley, I would like to thank Aaron Durency and Will Klein, two of our Wayne Tech and Career Center students, who hosted me this afternoon as I toured the Wayne Tech and Career Center. Aaron is in the electrical trades program, and Will is in auto body, two phenomenal young men, gave me a lot of good feedback about their experiences up there and their experiences here at North Rose Wilkins. So it was a pleasure walking with those two and getting to know a little bit about them and getting some feedback. And very similar to Anna, the voice that our children have and the strength that they have to come forward and make recommendations to us, I can't say enough about that, because at the age, excuse me, I wasn't mature enough to have an articulate conversation, and express some concerns that I thought needed to be addressed. So really great kids, doing a fantastic job representing us. So thank you to those two. You heard Gary talk about, excuse me, this governor's state of the state address, and some of the financial, things that we're paying close attention to would be the restoration of foundation aid and the expansion of UPK in particular. We know right now, it's a tactic, the negotiations that will take place from Earth State of the State until the actual state budget is adopted, we really won't know with certainty what our numbers look like. But I would say I'm very proud of our 3 PK and 4 PK classrooms, and what we're actually offering to our families in terms of early interventions, print and literacy-rich environments, and the fact that we have 18 three-year-olds this year, and 51 four-year-olds, it says quite a bit, I think you'll recall, a message that the three-year-old sent to you right before the holiday season, singing to you all. That was quite impressive, Mr. Ribby's class. So it's fantastic stuff. Another area that budget-wise we're watching, financially we're watching, and maybe call this, is Mr. Ribby, right? Yeah, so the three-year-old teacher. Another area we're watching with the fine eyes, on the school resource officer program. I'm very concerned about the state of the county resource officer program right now, because there is definitely a shortage of deputies in the county right now. Our sheriff has done a phenomenal job, his command staff has done a phenomenal job ensuring everybody that had an agreement had a school resource officer in place. You'll know that we're down to just Deputy Mandel, and, you know, he gives us active an effort on a daily basis, but that means that our district currently is too short. You know, I know from the road patrol ranks, they're about 18 deputies short, so my concern is that we're having the budget money elsewhere to provide us with a safe and secure environment, provide our staff with a safe and secure environment. And again, my compliment, the sheriff of the job he's doing to ensure that every district that had an agreement has a school resource officer. But I think as a school system, we need to be cognizant that if they lose too many more deputies, that really puts our school resource officer program in jeopardy, because they won't have a choice but to put them back out on the road if their contract doesn't get resolved soon. We'll be very proactive. We've been very proactive, we're putting money into other measures that we've been apprising our safety committee of. But again, this is something where I think in terms of our sheriff making the most out of the tools that he has available to him, my hope is that as the year goes on and the budget progresses for us, we can emphasize the restoration of the two positions that are currently open here in the district. So I know they have deputies in the academy, and I know they're doing everything they can to, you know, ensure the county resident's safety first and foremost, as students included. But this is something for people to close eye on. And then lastly, I will say to the Board of Education and the community that right before the holiday break, we received word from the state education department facilities planning that our capital improvement project, Phase Two, from the 2021 vote, has been approved, permits were issued. We're in the process right now of getting a line-by-line itemized assessment of what we can anticipate our cost to be, and we'll meet again next week. And our hope would be to have our numbers out to bid and our project out to bid by the end of January. We know that this is something that's putting us in a pretty good position to try and secure work before the weather breaks, but we also know that there are several school districts out there that have larger projects than we do. But we're hoping that, again, being out at the end of the month, having a decent-sized project with some early attempts at soliciting the best bid, that we'll be able to secure some healthy contracts to give the community exactly what they voted for in December, with that flare on asset preservation. So that's it for me. If you have any questions, you may have, anything that I've heard.
Anyone? If not, thank you, Mr. Paulin. Board members, we're going to take a five-minute break. During the break of time, all of you administrators and directors who are here tonight will be free to go. Thank you for being here. And Mr. Paulin, would you also during the break introduce us all to the new high school assistant principal we might get very much?
I would love that, but I would also like her daughters to come up and introduce themselves.
I don't know if they'll like that.
Well, they're smiling.
All right, thank you. We're back into session. Thank you for the break, and for our guests who follow the agenda or the reports and correspondence. Board Education, May 6th. Have anything to report from the elementary school?
I'm new. Actually, the first thing I want to report is something that I did not last month. North Rose Elementary School was recognized nationally for their project work, which is really quite impressive. This year though, in December, of course, they were all getting ready for Christmas, and the council sponsored cookies and cocoa in all the classrooms, and so the students got to celebrate a little bit and kind of relax for that. They enjoyed that. Also, Wayne County Sheriff's sponsored a shot with a sheriff program, and then two or three students were involved in that and really enjoyed that quite a bit. Then, which Mr. Prince already talked about, volunteers are coming back into the school, and there were parent volunteers that returned and helped weekly in classrooms as reading buddies, and they were helping in the cafeteria times too. And they also came in for that, cookies and cocoa, helping the classrooms. Christie wanted me to give a shout-out to all the staff, because during the holiday times, it can be exciting, but a little stressful for students too, and she really felt that all the staff really helped kids through the hustle and bustle of the holidays, so they could feel a little bit more at ease during the holidays. One of the things that we have heard a little bit about already, but that the instrumental music program has gone back to the elementary school, and fourth grade class students are able to join in. Mrs. Nash has had lessons, and I don't want to give a number, because in two weeks, they're going to report that one, you'd be impressed. But they are going to be giving a presentation, and there are multiple tabs in participation. Currently, the teachers there are also doing benchmarking for progress of students, and teachers are really enthused and happy about what they're seeing, because this year has been a positive year in terms of contact with students, more contact and more opportunities face-to-face with and from instruction, which has improved in all my years. So that's it for them. Thank you. Paul, do you have anything to report from the middle school?
Paul, do you have anything to report from the middle school?
Couple of things. Amsook testing was complete. When did the results come out on that, Mike? Amsook testing?
The teachers get it almost instantly. In terms of reporting, it'll be a component that they'll share as a note for their school improvement plan.
But the next school improvement updates from each of the respective levels will be highlighted by Megan in February. Because the school improvement plans themselves will show you other measures throughout the spring. So that was complete. Great, the modified teams are just, there are so many players. Wonderful, there's plenty on the girls' basketball team. You were telling me that two boys' basketball teams in modified. And there's twenty-seven boys up for wrestling. So they're just doing great on that. And then another really, this could always be in the good news category, we'll step within the school, where girls are down by sixty-eight percent in this district's percentage, sixty-two percent reduction.
Thank you. And Tina, do you have anything to report from the high school?
Yes, I met with Scott this week. Big time for the arts. As you know, we had a very successful musical performance this year. We've already talked about that. But our winter concert was combined with the art show went extremely well. I want to give a shout-out for Chrissy Schwinn, Carmine Strub, or Carolyn Strub, and Kelly Allen. He felt that they really put a lot of extra effort into it. But it was definitely successful. Other thing that he wanted to be noted was that the band has actually doubled in new membership. So in a short amount of time, so he's really feeling pretty happy about that. They're looking forward to the auditorium meeting first and some new ideas to come along with that. Three students were recognized under the Scholastic Arts Writing Award, which is a huge recognition. It's recognized in areas for both middle school and high school that Hailing obviously came to high school. Painting, drawing, fabric, mixed media, ceramics, and digital art. So under all of those categories, it's held at Anadolu College. But we had under the area ceramics with two students with honorable mentions, Kathy Chatfield and Katie Savansky. And in photography, Katie Topping had a gold key for her art portfolio in one photograph. And in addition to that, she had two silver keys and two honorable mentions. The gold key designation means that her portfolio judged at the national level. So that's pretty huge. Then the other thing that Scott noted was that every one of our fall sports teams was recognized and designated as scout athlete. Which means that that mattered to him. So that's pretty impressive to think about, you know, all of that. And then he just mentioned that interns and regents are coming up. That's wonderful.
Yes, sure.
He was pretty positive, happy that we were getting paid. And then he insisted.
Linda, do you have anything from Fort County? Okay, from Fort County, we do have some things coming up Tuesday and then at the end of the month from Fort County. And also Fort County Legislative is meeting. We're meeting again on Saturday to do some more polishing. A lot of the issues that are part of our presentation go to the state and federal are also lightly there in other groups as well. You know, there's a lot of common causes that I think wouldn't get a lot of attention. And you've got these sort of proposals for state and federal. I know you're aware of that, so I won't be saying more about county. The handbook committee has that needed to be. John, do you have anything you want to say about audit?
Yes, we met on January fifth, right after break. And we had quite a detailed meeting. We had the review of the Comptrollers Audit in 2022. We had the response letter, the report letter, and the acknowledgement letter that we sent back very diplomatically, a very student-oriented letter went back to the state. It turned out that we had not filed for the full amount of money allocated by the Smart Schools Act. And so our corrective action was that we would file the money. I mean, it's kind of easy to understand. And that's been completed. We did the single audit review and for federal programs, using money that the federal government that we received for all sorts of programs, it's a huge amount. And the auditor found no current or prior year deficiencies, which has been the case for years and years and years. They do want us to do a handbook, a procedure protocol book for every program, which makes a lot of sense because the programs change and they're different in texture and different composition. And so it's better to have a procedural book of protocol, a book of protocols on each one. And the book doesn't have to be a hundred pages. You know, I mean, it's not a huge dissertation. We also did the ultra-famous Extra Classroom Activities Fund summary that has to do with, students are allowed to have clubs and activities and they raise money for trips or activities that they do. But they take in money and they have a student treasurer. And there are certain rules that they go by. And the state, the state makes you follow certain rules that would be good auditing or good accounting rules if you were in a small company, a small business. And the kids all, I think, get a lot out of it because they have to follow the rules. And the staff advisor has to look over things. And there's a central treasurer. If they sell things, they have to say they have a sales tax. The kids do. So it's a very well-designed activity. The only problem that I ever had with it when I was principal was that some of the audit comments are pretty picky. But they have to be picky because they have to follow the rules of auditing, of accounting. And so we've had some inactive clubs. When a teacher sets up a club and they retire, they might leave and leave the money in the treasury, which is not huge amounts of money. We're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars. We're talking maybe a hundred and fifty dollars in one, three hundred in another. But they all have to be taken care of. So we train the treasurers. If Gary were here, he would be, he's in charge of training the kids and training the teachers, the accountants, the treasurers. So we had a good meeting and basically we had hardly any, no deficiencies in anything, which is very good. I think the only people who had a little bit of, we talked to were the clubs and activities, but that every year is the same. And it's pretty, it's educational in the states. It's very positive.
Thank you. And those audits are on the consent agenda for approval. Okay. Buildings and grounds, Jason, is there anything you would like to report?
We met today, so I'll leave you to that next meeting.
All right, good. How about the district safety meeting?
The district safety committee meeting here, December 21st. And we had a representation from Heather Herr. She's from Interlogic Solutions discussing different software options for our district to the community. Local law enforcement, the situation for promos. They've been able to get one where that was and goes where. That was basically the entire meeting. It was very informative.
Okay. How about the Alternative Learning Center?
Alternative Learning Center is, the Alternative Learning Center's doing great things. They're getting ready for interns and regents right now. They're working hand-to-hand with classroom teachers to get those students up to the level they need to be. They're also focused on touring and giving one-on-one attention to the students that they need. I'm actually going in to visit next week to report. There's some homework I see.
Good, great, thank you. Paul, do you have anything to report on policies?
Just the fact that the first two on there for tonight, the first reads, you know, they're pretty significant because these are hot topics, of course. Security, identity. So they're fairly extensive provisions. But take a look at it and questions, of course, can you?
Yes, thank you. All right. Those that completes the reports and correspondence. Tina, is there anyone who signed up for public access?
No, there isn't.
All right. Time for the consent agenda. A motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. John and Tina, discussion. Consent agenda runs through page two through page six. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Motion is carried. Now, on page six of your agenda, under policies, a motion, please, to approve the policies that are listed here under second read. John?
I have a question on fifty-six. Did I do the question wrong?
Are you there on the consent agenda?
No.
Are you on policies? Okay, I need to put it on the floor first place. Jason and Linda, motion is on the floor now, discussion. John?
Fifty-six, ten, as to insurance, is calling for a deletion of the policy, which is okay with me. The question I have is, are all those things covered with state, federal laws and regulations?
Yes.
Okay, now, question is procedural. If anything changes, is there, how do we know it if we don't have a policy? In other words, if limits or coverage change on state level, federal level, how will we know anything about it? Just because we have policy doesn't mean we'll know it either.
So my, yes, well, Gary, that would be something that the business official would have probably looked forward on. Gary would keep you up to date on that. So just because the policy's going away doesn't mean that the, you know, intent for communication will go away. And I would anticipate that, you know, Gary would keep you apprised or I would keep you apprised of any such changes. You know, I think last week, you'll recall, an insurance question came up and I kind of answered that for the Board of Education. But in terms of anything, in terms of significant changes, absolutely would keep you apprised.
I wasn't, yeah, I was really worried about the student insurance. And the student insurance is not like liability on your roof or on a bus, you know, accident or whatever. Student insurance could change radically or the lack thereof, whether it's the state to say we don't need to do it anymore and for cost saving, we can get rid of it. Where I know that in some cases, there are cases filed by students that don't have insurance. So it's a very valuable thing for some students. So we would know that somehow.
Yeah, I would anticipate that any such changes would be part of my superintendent's report or something from the school business official, absolutely.
Yeah, and you would think maybe the policies would come to policies as well. In other words, if something is significant, you could.
Yeah, I would anticipate it actually, but I come right from the commissioner's office if that was going to happen. Because I think to your point, you know, if it's going to be detrimental to students, you could imagine there would be strong advocacy from school districts and State Education Department alike pushing back on that. Similar to what we're doing with the school lunch program. I mean, the universal basic lunch program's gone away this year for many districts, not ours, because we qualify. But in terms of the advocacy at the state level, people are trying to have the program that existed under pandemic restored. So I think in terms of student insurance, if that was the example, I could anticipate the same.
I guess, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion on policies? All right, then, all in favor of approving these, the Policy fifteen-ten revision and the deletion of fifty-six-ten? All in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. And now, board member requests, comments, discussions. Anything board members want to bring up or comment? All right, thank you. Under good news, anyone? We've had a lot of good news with our year's summer reports. Paul?
Well, we're just about meeting the desk. In fact, we had this fall scholar, scholar athlete teams. But I just wanted to find out in Lake Shore News, there was a listing of all the schools, three of them are in other schools. Hannah in Madison, of course, just spoke to us a little while ago. I had thought about trying to stop her, she was walking up the road. She's also the Rotary Club selected for December. So I'm going to give that a whirl. Cora Hatner was one from the, that was from the high school. We have a former graduate from North Rose Wilkens who was on the Dean's List at Finger Lakes South College in the nursery. And that's Chelsea Ennam. And then you mentioned Noah, also in that same event. I think it was the same event, PJ Ennam, one of his students. Well, it's a little late.
Anyone else, John?
Last night, Syracuse University played basketball against Virginia Tech. And on the Virginia Tech, luckily, not luckily, skill-wise, Syracuse won, handled it. But on the court, it was number thirteen for Virginia Tech, last name of Max. And I just wanted to know that we had, so this family used to live in our school district. I know the relationship, but it's a really close relationship. It could be an uncle, it could be, I'll have to find out. It was kind of interesting that a student who might have actually been on our court, went to college at a even level and played ball. And it's really contributing.
Anyone else?
So I've got two more that I have. And I had before, yeah?
Yes, sure.
The girls' basketball team actually was over at Lobson, Big Boy. We're bringing the catapult, the red tail, actually, this is just for Christmas. And then the rest of the team also helped take down decorations at the local sports society. Students have a little bit, thanks.
And I would like to comment. You often report on the athletic program, but I was very, very impressed with the music program, with the Christmas concert here at the middle school and at the high school. We've just seen just an amazing amount of talent from these kids. And it's really obvious that the teachers are doing outstanding job. So I thank Mr. Poland for the improvements that he's pushed in that program. Because, of course, music is a character in my heart. So I'm happy to see the musicians, both vocally and instrumentally. That completes our agenda. We do have green sheets. Do you have the green sheets? Unfortunately, green sheets are additions to the agenda. So first, I need a motion to put the green sheets on the agenda. So a motion, please, Paul and Jason. Any discussion? All in favor of? All in favor of putting these extra items on the agenda? Tina, I agree, thank you, motion is carried. And now the motion, the agenda item is to appoint the school counselor, Lori Purcell, to the high school. A motion please to approve this, or do we have, no, we are, a motion to approve this resolution. Linda, you have, Tina? Discussion? All in favor? Motion is carried. That completes our agenda. There being no further business on our agenda, a motion to, oh, adjourn, yes, adjourn. Motion please, Shelley and Jemaine, all in favor, we are adjourned.